Recording in progress.
It gets so quiet right before we start. There we go. Ready? Right on cue. Good evening. We will call the special Auburn City Council meeting for Monday, April 7th, 2025 to order, and we will begin with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge the federally recognized Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, the ancestral keepers of the land we are gathered on today. We thank them for their immense contributions to our state and local history, culture, economy, and identity as Washingtonians. Tonight, the meeting will be held both in person and virtually. Now, if you would all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Rakes.
Here.
Councilmember Amer.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Patrath Manuel.
Here.
All right. We have, one, two, three, four. We have five proclamations this evening. So I'm going to head over to the podium and we'll do them one at a time. The first proclamation this evening is for Spirit Fest, and I believe we have several people that are going to be coming forward for that. Kynell Caddio, Sean Terry, Ken Brandon, Amber Smith, David Allen, Myrtle Thompson, Rick and Kathy Stanfield, Robert S. Roman, Naoko I. Montague. Are any of you in the audience? If you are, please come forward.
They're not all speaking, right?
No, 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 no. Just those that wanted to be up here to help acknowledge Spirit Fest. All right. Mayor's proclamation. Whereas, we recognize Spirit Fest as a vital and valuable asset to the city of Auburn, as a community nonprofit food program serving at-risk populations since 1999. Whereas, Spirit Fest is local, 100% self-sustaining, and dependent upon the generosity of individuals who donate their time, transportation, and expenses, so that all donations received are provided to the underserved community. Whereas, the city of Auburn recognizes the importance of having a community-driven source of free nutritious meals for at-risk children, families, individuals, shelters, and respite care centers. And whereas, excuse me, the volunteers of Spirit Fest and their partners from the Messiah Lutheran Church, Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Pyongyang Korean Presbyterian Church, SAR Super Savor Foods, community organizations, volunteers, and concerned citizens who have come forward to volunteer. And whereas, we recognize Spirit Fest for their care and passion in serving nearly 170 free meals per week, while additionally supporting Ray of Hope, Sundown Overnight Shelter, and the Auburn Food Bank. And whereas, we pay special tribute to Lynn and Brock Snyder, who are the co-founders of Spirit Fest, for their continued collaboration of community organizations, local businesses, and volunteers in ongoing operation and financial support. And now, therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim April 7th, 2025, as Spirit Fest Recognition Day in the city of Auburn, and urge all residents to pay special tribute and extend their gratitude to these individuals and organizations who are committed to making Spirit Fest an ongoing reality for our community, dated the 7th day of April, 2025. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I just want to thank the city of Auburn for this honor. I want to thank all those organizations and folks that make this dinner possible each week. We have these volunteers, but we've had faithful volunteers through many years. And if you volunteer in any way, please stand up. So that you might be appreciated. The only way that we maintain this wonderful nonprofit is through volunteers and through generosity from donors. And I just give thanks, and I know that we couldn't do this on our own. So it's sad that our numbers have increased from 12 in the beginning to over 170. So the times are tough. So we just appreciate that continued support. Thank you.
I remember times when I was back on council back in 2015. In fact, I think I looked up, I think it was a 2015 article, when Brock, you and Lynn came in looking for support for a tent city. And we have come a long ways. So thank you for the work that you and the volunteers do in this community. Auburn is, as I've said before, is not maybe the richest city in the world when you consider per capita income, but when you consider the support and the love and the care that is given in this community, we are second to none. So thank you very much.
Should I say something?
Sure, sure, Brock.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank you and the council for taking care of Auburn and for allowing us to be able to do what we're called to do. You know, this all started as a seed. Over, well, back in the late 90s, we were invited to go to the Methodist Church on East Main Street by Elaine Pennables. I don't know if anybody remembers her, but she is like the Mother Teresa of Auburn. She started teen pregnancy. She started the dinner over at the Methodist Church. She invited us to serve food and mop the floors. And because of that, we were called to do what we're doing. So that's all I want to say is thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to do what we love doing, and that's serving Auburn.
Thank you, Brock.
Next is Arbor Day. I believe Bryce Landred, Auburn or Urban Tree Board Chair. Is Bryce here? There he is. I can't see with my glasses on, but I can't read, but I can't read without them, so. I used to think it was so silly when people would be playing with their glasses and on and off. I so get it now. All right. Mayor's proclamation. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and wherever they are planted, a resource of joy, beauty, and spiritual renewal. And whereas, members of the Auburn Garden Club, statewide Washington Community Forestry Council, Department of Natural Resources, and the Auburn Urban Tree Board will join city officials and Auburn Parks Arts and Recreation Department employees in planting, and I'm really excited I can pronounce this one this year, a Tompkins King apple tree at Mary Olsen Farm at 11:00 a.m., Wednesday, April 16th, 2025, in honor of Arbor Day. And now, therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim April 16th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the city of Auburn, and urge our community members to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to plant and protect trees and woodland areas for the well-being of our community for this and future generations, dated the 16th day of April, 2025. Bryce?
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I don't know if I can only say a few words. Thank you. Thank you to the city of Auburn. I believe this year will be '23?
I think so.
'22, '23, or '24. Auburn being a tree city, USA. And part of that is either maintaining a certified arborist on staff, or in lieu of that, having a tree board that is made up of volunteers to help, help the city manage and look out for the trees within our community. So I have been the chair of that committee for the last three or nine years.
At least.
Something like that. And we have a great group of people. We're always looking for new members to help us identify some of the most magnificent trees within the city of Auburn. We will be producing a map this year that has all of our significant trees mapped out for a walking trip and a driving trip. They are all over the place in our city, big gigantic old trees that were planted 100 years ago or thereabouts. As for the planting of the Tompkins King apple, I have procured, the tree board will be providing the tree this year. And I have two, so just in case. Because I plant a lot of trees, and you can't always count on one. So we have two of those. We'll be planting them at the Mary Olsen Farm. So that's coming up. Looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
They couldn't count on them originally. They planted a million at that first one, right? All right. The next proclamation is for National Public Safety Telecommunicators, and we have Vonnie Meyer, Mayor from ValleyCom 911. She's the executive director, and Cheryl Koalczik, newly retired supervisor, if you would like to come on up. I mean, that's dedication. You retire last week, and you're here for a proclamation, because that's the passion that's involved with the people who are these public safety telecommunicators. So thank you both for being here. Mayor's proclamation. Whereas, emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. Whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and EMS providers is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers, EMS providers, firefighters, and specialty team members depend upon the quality of accuracy of information obtained from residents who call the ValleyCom 911 Emergency Communications Center. And whereas, the city of Auburn is served by Valley Communications Center 911, known as ValleyCom 911, and whose public safety telecommunicators, PSTs, handle over 616,000 phone calls and over 472,000 dispatchable calls for service a year. That's a lot. ValleyCom 911 PSTs are highly trained professionals who work under a uniquely stressful environment. ValleyCom 911 PSTs are first responders, providing lifesaving pre-arrival instructions, triage, mediation, de-escalation, and the calm presence on the phone and the radio that is focused on both responder and public safety. And whereas, under RCW 38.60.020, public safety telecommunicator means a first responder working in a primary public safety answering point, regardless of title, who has successfully completed the training, certification, or recertification standards established in the state of Washington. Whereas, this includes an employee of the state, a local public agency, or an independent governmental agency whose primary responsibility is to receive, process, transmit, or dispatch 911 emergency and non-emergency calls for law enforcement, fire, emergency medical, and other public safety services by telephone, radio, or other communication devices, and includes an individual who promoted from this position and supervises individuals who perform these functions. And now, therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13th through the 16th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Auburn, in honor of our public safety telecommunicators, whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and residents safe, dated the 7th day of April, 2025. Vonnie, I am honored to give this to you with my appreciation, and would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor, council, community. I have the privilege of coming out and looking into this audience and being able to share how important these first responders are. But before I get into kind of my speech, I'd like to turn it over to Cheryl and let her speak a couple of words about her experience and share with you what it's like to be a 36-plus-year employee.
Thank you, Vonnie. Other duties is assigned.
Yes. Other duties is assigned, yeah.
I don't have to do that anymore.
No.
But yet, tonight, you are.
I am. After 37 and a half years in public safety, I was able to retire last week, and so.
Can I get you a little closer to the microphone?
Okay. I started at the city of Kent, actually, in their records department, then moving on to ValleyCom as a call receiver, and then a dispatcher, and then a supervisor. And one of the things I got to see was the reclassification of our folks that take the phone calls, our folks that dispatch the calls, reclassified as first responders on the state level. And hopefully, that will continue on the federal level, and that has made a huge difference for those coming into this job now. So I want to thank you and thank the city of Auburn for your support for all these years. Thank you.
And I do also want to reiterate the support we receive from Mayor Backus and our city mayors and all of the communities and the public. One of the things that I talk about is the inherent trauma of 911. These folks are in the front lines doing lifesaving changes. I love that we follow the proclamation for Arbor Day, because we have a huge tree of life in our com center, and each leaf represents a save of cardiac arrest that our folks had a hand in, where that person was able to be released from the hospital and go home to their families and their communities because of the efforts of these first responders. Cheryl has done every position in the com room, and she is the face of 911. She is resilient. She is tough. She is compassionate. She is everything that we try to embody when we give our service. And I could not be prouder to be up here speaking on her behalf and recognizing her long-tenured career. Cheryl not only gave it all to ValleyCom, she continues to be a leader in the field, because I know that she'll be coming back to more meetings. But one of the things I wanted to highlight tonight, as 911, Cheryl is also a human being, a community member, and this year has been rough for her. In May of last year, her husband, who's also a supervisor at our center, was heading to Leavenworth for a family vacation and was struck head-on on his motorcycle by a drunk driver. Cheryl stood by his side, and I'm happy to report, after having to travel outstate for extensive medical rehab, Steve is back to work, and Cheryl is conveniently retiring now. So I think it was in her plan all along. So it's on a happy note. We're sad to lose her, but we're happy that, the reason why, that she's able to retire. So thank you again, Mayor, for all of your support 365 days a year, and thank you for allowing us to come down and recognize 911. Thank you.
They are an amazing team at ValleyCom. All right. The next one is for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas, sexual assault is pervasive. Every 68 seconds in the United States, someone is sexually assaulted. And whereas, Black, Indigenous, and other people of color, people living in poverty, LGBTQ+ people, seniors, people with disabilities, and others who have been historically oppressed, are disproportionately affected by sexual violence in significant and complex ways. And whereas, sexual assault is among the most under-reported crimes for many reasons, but survivors who are already among the most marginalized face additional barriers to reporting, such as language, immigration status, disability, or shame. And whereas, ending sexual violence requires us to address racism, sexism, and all forms of oppression that contribute to the perpetuation of sexual assault. Bless you. And whereas, sexual violence exists on a continuum of behavior that includes racist, sexist, transphobic, homophobic, ableist, or other hate speech. This ranges from dehumanizing jokes to verbal harassment to physical assaults. And whereas, by working together as a community, we can alleviate the trauma of sexual violence by ensuring supportive resources are available to all survivors while standing up to and actively disrupting harmful attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual violence. And now, therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Auburn, and urge all residents to join advocates and communities throughout King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors. Together, we commit to a safer future for all children, young people, adults, and families in our community, dated the 7th day of April, 2025. And last is Sick Heritage Month, and I believe we have Jasukarand Singh Sorrow and other members of the community. So please come forward. Good to see you. Husband. Good to see you, my friend. Good to see you. You're welcome to stand on the other side over here as well. And if somebody wants to take photos, you are welcome to be anywhere that you want to be around here if you want to. All right. Feel free to move about. All right. Mayor's proclamation. Whereas, the city of Auburn recognizes and acknowledges the holiest Sikh holiday, Vaisakhi, on April 14th, 2025, as National Sikh Day and the month of April as National Sikh Heritage Month. Whereas, Sikhism is a religion found in the Punjab region of South Asia over five centuries ago and introduced to the United States in the 19th century. And whereas, Sikhism is the fifth-largest world religion with approximately 30 million Sikhs worldwide, including over 1 million Sikhs living in the United States. And whereas, Sikhs in the United States pursue diverse professions and walks of life, making rich contributions to the economic vibrance of the United States as farmers, engineers, doctors, scientists, and business owners. And whereas, Vaisakhi is one of the most religiously significant days in Sikh history, commemorating the creation of the Kalsa, a fellowship of devout Sikhs by Guru Gobind Singh in 1699. And whereas, today, the city of Auburn seeks to recognize the diversity of its community and afford all residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared experiences. And now, therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of Auburn, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as National Sikh Heritage Month in the city of Auburn, and we wish our Sikh American community a very joyous Vaisakhi filled with celebration, dated the 7th day of April, 2025. You are the boss. Would you like to say a few words, mister? Mister boss?
Granddaughter will say a few words. Thank you, Mayor, and the council, for recognizing the Sikh community. We have been in the United States, like Mayor said, since 1910 or before. Some came in 1890s and thereabout. We are well-known for wearing the turban. You know, that stands for justice, equality, and everything else that comes with the freedom. So I'd like to thank each and everyone and our resident of the Auburn City. I'd like to thank you for coming up and understanding the Sikh religion. We do have a temple up on the east hill by Green River College. There is food available to anyone, from Sunday especially, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Other days, there is food available too in the evening. So you are all welcome to come have a free lunch. Also, we run a Degete community kitchen from the same temple. My granddaughter will talk about that. They have provided about 50,000 meals to the Local Area of Hope and another community center. I'm not sure what's the name of it. Maybe she will let you know about that. So I let my granddaughter talk about it. They've been working on for the last 10 years. So my daughter Tina will say a few words, and I would like to thank each and everyone for coming out. Thank you.
Waiguruji Ka Kalsa, Waiguruji Ki Fati. This is just a common-known greeting among Sikhs, and it literally means the Kalsa belongs to God and all victory belongs to God. Respected dignitaries, welcome and thank you for giving us the opportunity to share and reflect the importance of Vaisakhi. We, the Sikh community, humbly express our gratitude to the city of Auburn for their recognition of April 14th as a Sikh holiday and the designation of April as a National Sikh Heritage Month. As mentioned, Sikhism is founded in Punjab, and over 1 million Sikhs today live across the U.S. So Sikhs in America work across a wide range of professions and have made rich contributions to the economy of this great nation. We, as a community, are known for our hard-working, law-abiding, and contributing members of the American society. Vaisakhi is one of the most significant days in Sikh history and also coincides with the Spring Harvest Festival, a time of great celebration and gratitude for farmers across India. As mentioned, we also have a Degete community kitchen run out of the temple in Auburn. This kitchen is, we run it on Saturdays, and we deliver our burritos to two different areas. It's mostly youth-based. We try to target it towards youth space, encourage them to get not only volunteer hours, but experience working and connecting to our community. But again, on behalf of the Sikh community, I extend a warm congratulations to all on this sacred day, and by God's will, may all prosper. Waiguruji Ka Kalsa, Waiguruji Ki Fati.
I'd like to say thanks. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I think this is great to see every year, city of Auburn, you recognize us, invite us here, welcome us. Thank you. And I. And I joke with always, you know, from, I moved from Kent. So I'm here and I have gone a long, long time back. So in North Auburn, but now we Sikhs are moving from Kent to Auburn. I think Kent has a more Sikh population than, Auburn has more population than Kent, actually. So thank you very much. I'd just like to extend, I want to invite, actually, I think you all might have email in your mailbox on April twelfth, Saturday. And I just right up the hill, we have a Kalsa Gomul Center, we run a school for the kids. There is celebration, there will be a parade, lots of food. And thank you, Mayor, for coming last year. I think Councilmember Tracy came there too. So please come this year too, and we'll celebrate together. And thank you again. Bye.
Thank you so much to Mayor Nancy Backus and the entire city council for having us here today. We appreciate the council and the mayor's office for making this proclamation. It means a lot to us. Sikhs have been a part of the Auburn and Greater Puget Sound community for over forty years. And this Vaisakhi correlates with the Harvest Festival and also the founding day of the Kalsa and the Sikh religious identity. When we say Kalsa, it refers to Sikhs who are baptized in the Sikh religion. That is an identity that is founded in equality, social justice, service to humanity, and religious tolerance, along with the ethos of praying to God, working hard, and sharing with the community. On behalf of the entire Sikh community, I would once again like to express my thanks for being recognized by the city and receiving this proclamation. I would also like to invite everybody to join us on May seventeenth at the Kent Showware Center for the Vaisakhi celebration and Kalsa Day Parade. There will be lots of free food and a great opportunity to experience the Sikh culture. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So we are here in beautiful country. We are very thankful to be blessed to part of America. We are here with our, for equality, justice, and freedom, most of them, which aligns with the founding fathers of this nation. We are thankful. We are here to unite the community and be the part of the growth and prosperity of United States of America. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nancy. I will talk to you later about another.
Okay. Thank you. This one is...
Is that the one you gave me?
Yes, this is it.
Thank you.
I just want to share a couple of items. Back in 2017, there, you may remember that there was significant damage by a hurricane down in the Florida area. Members of the temple, the gudwara up on, by Auburn Mountain View High School, collected food and other toiletries. The toilet paper was easier to load on the truck than the cases of water, I will tell you that. But they were collecting all types of products, and they had people driving those trucks down to Florida to assist after the hurricane, after the devastation. That is the love that this community shares. And also, I can remember several times at the Auburn Food Bank, seeing them delivering food for individuals. And it is pure love and pure joy to be here tonight to, to celebrate Sikh heritage and Vaisakhi and Kalsa. So thank you very much, all of you, for being here. And I think tonight, we had quite a variety of proclamations. But Auburn is very blessed to be so diverse and so passionate and so caring about our community. So I want to thank you all very much for being here this evening. We would love to have you stay for the whole thing. Some of you may, I mean, some of you may, but we also understand if, if you want to leave, we will not take it personally. Not for long, anyway. Not often that we have standing room only. Next, we have one appointment this evening, and it is for the Planning Commission. City council to approve the appointment of Kirk Hiller to the Planning Commission for a three-year term expiring December thirty-first, 2027. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Rakes.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the appointment of Kirk Hiller to the Planning Commission for a three-year term expiring December thirty-first, 2027.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Second motion.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rakes.
Thank you, Mayor. After looking at Kirk's application, I believe that he would come with a wealth of knowledge and would be a great asset to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. And just for the record, Mr. Hiller is here tonight. If you want to wave, he's out in the audience. So thank you for coming down to, to be part of the, the official process this evening. Are there any questions or comments about Councilmember Baldwin?
Just one comment, which is I'm excited to have someone from our newly annexed Kent Bridges community that'll be part of the Planning Commission. So thank you for joining in the fun.
Thank you. All right. Not seeing any other, all those in favor of the appointment of Kirk Hiller to the Planning Commission for a three-year term expiring December thirty-first, 2027, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Hiller, thank you very much for your willingness to serve, and I hope you're used to binders of information, because the Planning Commission does do an awful lot of work. So thank you very much for your willingness to serve. All right. We will move to audience participation. This is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the city council on any issue. The public can participate in person or submit written comments in advance. We also have the ability to have remote comment. Did we have any remote comment tonight, Sean?
No, Your Honor, only one written.
We have one written comment? All right.
County expressed frustration regarding the vacant council position deadline and provided comments regarding Pacific Islander community in Auburn.
Thank you. All right, we will move to in-person participation. If you, if you would like to speak this evening, we ask that you please come forward, give your name, city of residence for the record, and limit comments to three minutes. Sean will be utilizing the lovely countdown clock that is over there in front of her so that you have the ability to see how much time you have left. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak this evening? Yes, sir. Please come forward, give your name and city of residence for the record, and please limit comments to three minutes.
My name is Mark Selich. I'm a resident of Auburn and have been for sixty years. I'd like to talk about HPMs tonight. I've sent out an email about them. I know people may not believe them, you know, science fiction and all that, but they are real, and I checked around this area. There's over fifteen hundred people that have been microwaved in this country right now. And over two hundred have been microwaved since 2016, right here in the Puget Sound area. So it's, and it's getting worse, it's escalating. And I don't know why they haven't been able to stop them, but they haven't. And I've been, I've been microwaved. I know, like Kent Rack, his wife was microwaved. He's been microwaved. You know, twenty, thirty, forty people I know that have been microwaved. And they've reported complaint to the police, and got quite a, quite a few other things. I'm staying at Dawn's house, which is down there, temporary housing, and I think Police Chief Kayla suggested that to make it more safe for me, to get me off the streets. And I talked to Billia, she's put up with this, put up with this and everything like that. There's been a lot going on. And, and I got a guy roommate right next to me, they tortured him to death. I mean, he screams and yells, kicks him, and you know, there's nothing wrong with him. He is perfectly fine when he moved into March of last year. And then all of a sudden, July, he started screaming, yelling at them, calling out their names. You know, you hear Tom Mann, you hear Steve Richards, he's yelling at them. So we know who they are. I know who they are. I know where they live. I investigated all that. I've met them before, and they, I know who hired them. It was Bill Westby. And I know that the reason they did it is because I, they say I turned them in for child sexual trafficking. I showed them, I, I worked at the ship, I turned them in for security violations. The LRAD can see through walls and, and hear through walls back and forth. And they even called up former coworkers that, at work, Puget Sound Naval Shipyard, where I was a mechanical engineering supervisor, and bugged them, and they've complained to some federal agents even. So I just want to say that it's really, they're really dangerous, these HPMs. They're invisible, they have unlimited range, almost. They can cause seizures, traumatic brain injuries. They can cause, you know, just about, about anything you think of. I'm kind of, I'm not working very well here. I just want to say something needs to be done about them. And where they live, I have proof, you know, I have meter readings I started sending out that shows that they, I'm, I'm being microwaved. So that's proof, I have recordings of them, lots of them. They've admitted to raping little girls.
Mr. Selich, your, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight?
Good evening, city council and members of the audience. My name is Skylar Nichols. You may also know me as my alias, Skyman. I am an active real-life superhero, been active this will be my fifteenth year. And there was an open city council vacancy, and I was personally asked to apply. I did. It took me two weeks to figure out the resume and the application, and very proud to turn in my application. And yet, last week, I get the email that I was passed over. Didn't really explain why I was passed over. So I plan on hanging out to see who is qualified and gets appointed to at least be in the interview process. Curious as to what the qualifications are. I know I'm a, I was a history and political science major at Highline College, so I have a little experience in government. One of my mentors was TM Sell at Highline. Also Jim Glennon, he was the one that inspired me to be a history major. But again, I bewildered as to why I couldn't even be selected for the interview process. Snowballs chance and hell of me getting in, but you know, at least being honored to be part of the interview process would have been nice. What started this down the road is Auburn's, Mayor Backus' city address back at Muckleshoot at the end of February. And lo and behold, I saw myself up on the big screen in my, in all my regalia, and it inspired me, okay, I need to put my boots on the ground and get more involved in my hometown. I thought government and politics would be an interesting arena. City council, what a position. Y'all do awesome work and represent the city well. So I hope to just hang out and find out why I wasn't even considered for the interview process. He used a lot of flowery language in his reply, but not a reason why. Maybe I didn't meet the qualifications, maybe I don't get, get out enough in my community. Skyman is present. You may not always see me, but I'm out there. Anyway, I do appreciate you taking time for letting me speak, and thank you to the special person that emailed me personally to, to apply for city council position. That's a great honor. And again, why was I passed over? I don't know why. Skyman does a lot. Skylar Nichols would be a great addition to the city council, but you know, oh, well, maybe next time. Thank you very much. Skyman salutes.
Thank you very much. And thank you for all that you do in the community. And I know you are at a lot of events where I, I see you out and about. Is there anyone else, final time, is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Please come forward, give your name and city of residence for the record, and please limit comments to three minutes.
Virginia Howgen, Auburn, Washington. I've never been microwaved, and I'm not a secret hero, but sometimes I feel a little I particularly admire people. I'm not, I don't get involved in organized religion, but I appreciate the fact that we have volunteers who feed people who need a meal and a warm place to be. I have, I will have, in May, I will have spent some time at Masai Alu Thun Church for memorial services. And I saw the kind of things that these people do in a church. I appreciate it a lot. However, I hope that the mayor of Auburn, who I understand makes over a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year, is donating a lot of money to one of these nonprofit corporations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Final time, is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, we will move on. We have no correspondence this evening. We do have one council ad hoc committee currently, and the council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the city council if any. And we currently have the Council Rules of Procedure Ad Hoc Committee, and that is chaired by Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Mayor. Our status to share today is similar to what we had at our last study session, which is the committee is continuing to work through the feedback that we had for the document. We've made it through sections one through eleven. We have initiated draft changes to that. We are going to continue with another meeting this Friday, picking up with section twelve and continuing through. I expect we may have another one to two. I would expect minimum meetings to continue to incorporate the feedback and make adjustments, taking in, of course, feedback that we have from our clerk and our city attorney, and committing to the tenants that we make sure we do everything legally, make sure that we're not creating unnecessary work for staff, and that we serve the community. So with those as kind of our guiding principles, just continuing to, to make our way through it. So if there's any other feedback that people have along the way, I would direct that to be shared to the clerk or the city attorney. And, and like I said, before we get too far along, anything that's been done so far is draft, because we may find things in the back half of the document that influence the front half. So we're not fully baked yet, but we're, I think in the sourdough community, we would be rising accounts. Sorry, I've got bread on the mind today. I think that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Councilmember Baldwin. Right, we will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Rakes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Baldwin.
I would second that.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rakes.
Tonight's consent agenda consists of minutes from March seventeenth, city council meeting, and minutes from March twenty-fourth and thirty-first for the study session, and for claims and vouchers as described on your agenda.
Thank you. Any comments from the finance special focus area chair?
Sure. So we had reviewed the one set of claims vouchers dated March twenty-sixth, 2025. That included about thirty-one pages of vouchers with nine electronic fund transfers and two wire transfers for a total of approximately seven point two-two million dollars. And that did cover vouchers four-seven-nine-two-eight-three through four-seven-nine-three-nine-eight. We also reviewed one set of payroll vouchers for the period covering March thirteenth to April second, 2025, for a total of approximately three point five-three million dollars. And that included our payroll checks and electronic deposits.
and electronic deposits. We had one question for staff this week, which they addressed, and I think we are good to recommend approving the vouchers.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Are there any items that council would like removed for separate consideration? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Consent agenda passes. Moving on to ordinances, ordinance number 6972 and ordinance amending section 16.06.020, 16.06.055, and 16.06.130 and adding section 16.06.085 and 16.06.095 of the Auburn City Code relating to the State Environmental Policy Act. Is there a motion? Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance 6972, please.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would update Auburn City Code, Chapter 16.06, Environment Review Procedures to Adopt the New Thresholds and Categorical Exemptions for Minor New Construction, which will streamline the permitting process for multifamily and middle housing developments.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance number 6972, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Ordinance number 6972 passes. Excuse me. Ordinance number 6976 and ordinance amending the comprehensive zoning map. Is there a motion? Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance 6976, please.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Baldwin.
I would second.
Thank you. Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance will update the city's comprehensive zoning map, correcting the zoning of six privately-owned parcels misidentified as P1 Public Use District 2R-NM residential neighborhood mixed use.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance number 6976, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Ordinance number 6976 passes. Moving to resolutions, resolution number 5820, a resolution accepting a grant from the Seattle Police Department on behalf of the Washington State Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Rakes.
I move to approve resolution 5820.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Amor.
I second.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rakes.
The Seattle Police Department is a lead agency for Washington State's Internet Crime Against Children Task Force. The Auburn Police Department is a member of the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force and was awarded $20,000 of overall federal grant award provided to the Washington State Task Force.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of resolution number 5820, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Resolution number 5820 passes. All right, we are going to now move into an executive session. The city council will adjourn into executive session per RCW 42.30.110 Sub 1 Sub H to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office. However, any interview of such candidate and final action appointing a candidate to elective office shall be in a meeting open to the public. The length of time for the executive session is 30 minutes and we will resume the meeting, let's see, we will resume the meeting at 6, I'm going to give us a couple minutes, 6:55. And in addition to myself, the city council and senior staff attorney Taryn Jones will be required to attend. And I know that there are some applicants and some that wanted to be considered as applicants in the audience. I just want to explain a little bit of the process. There were 45 applications that came in, I believe 44 of those were from eligible, meaning living within the city limits of Auburn. At that point in time, council were given redacted applications of all 44 applicants. That means their names were not known, their addresses were not known, any identification, their emails were not given, it was all redacted information. That way, the, the council was allowed to view all of the applications. Each was assigned a number, 1 through 45. And they then looked through and determined their top 10 to top 15 candidates to move forward. Shawn Campbell, our city clerk, received all of those recommendations from all six of the council members and tallied all of that information to come up with a top 15. Today, one of those applicants dropped out of the process, so we currently have a top 14. We are going to go into executive session, not discussing individuals because council still does not know the individuals who have been selected at the top 15. They will be in there discussing qualifications. When we come back out, there will be a process. Council will have decided how many of the applicants they choose to interview. It could be five, it could be 10, it could be any number that they want. When they come back out, everything will be public out here. We will ask, how many of you would like candidate number one to be interviewed? Council will get, if they choose 10 people to interview, each council member will get 10 votes. They can only vote once per candidate. So then the top, however many council has chosen to interview, those top candidates will be the finalists and will be notified that next Monday at another special council meeting that will begin at 5:30, 5, it's 5:00 PM next week, thank you, will begin at 5:00 PM. These are open public meetings, everyone is invited to attend. We do encourage that if you are a candidate, you do not stay in council chambers while another candidate is being interviewed. That is a courtesy because the first candidate doesn't get the edge on knowing what the questions are. And if you sit in the room and you hear the questions, it, it would give you maybe a little bit of an edge. So we're going to ask that all candidates stay in another room, but we can't force you to do that because this is an open public meeting. Okay? Did I miss anything on that, Shawn?
No, Your Honor.
All right. So it is now 6:24. I'm going to give us two minutes to get in there and get situated, so we will return at 6:56 or we will extend it that time. Thank you.
Oh, it's cooler out here.
I was gonna say, it is so much cooler out here. Oh, when it went down, I was complaining.
I feel like I'm in the wrong seat here.
Why are you under the heater?
Huh? No, no, my chair was, like, being weird.
Two, three, four. Missing two. Okay, don't remember.
All right. We will call the Auburn City Council meeting back to order and thank everyone in the audience for your grace as that thirty minutes extended, as you are aware, well past thirty minutes. But that was in order to ensure that council had full opportunity to consider all of the applications that were in front of them. So, thank you again for your grace this evening as they went through that. As I mentioned, we will now, on the council floor, council will determine how many applicants they would like to interview at next Monday, April fourteenth meeting. Is there a motion? Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to interview six candidates for the next meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second? Deputy Mayor? It was on already. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, would you like to speak to that motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Wow, the caliber of applications we received over the past two weeks have been pretty phenomenal. It was a great conversation amongst council members of qualifications and attributes that they could bring to this city. I'm super impressed with quite a few of them. It's a heart, out of the fifteen that we had reviewed, I feel six of them were phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Councilmember Amer.
I don't know how to say that. I prefer to meet, to interview seven.
So, you want to amend the motion?
I wanna amend the motion to interview seven candidate half, like, kinda.
Thank, all right. Is, is there a second to that motion? Councilmember Baldwin.
I would second the motion.
All right. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Yes, Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Mayor. I would go as far as, not to have everyone strangle me over here, I would consider going as high as ten even. We've had forty-five applicants. I think that there was a lot of interest in the positions, so I'm giving a second because we're increasing that number of potential interviews. And would second if people wanted to maybe go to ten. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments on seven? Councilmember Tracy Taylor and then Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Respectfully, Councilmember Baldwin, while I appreciate you thinking higher, I'm also thinking of our staff and the amount of work that goes behind pulling this together. I, I just think that we need to be cognizant of the fact that there is going to be a lot of work to do in less than a week to pull this off.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I would have to echo with Councilmember Baldwin. I think the number ten, we've done it before, and, um, but we have-
Okay, go ahead.
We had so many great applicants, and I would hate for us to stop at seven.
This is kind of getting out of order of how that should be handled, but we have a motion for seven on the floor. We can take another amendment if, one more amendment if there is desire for another amendment. Councilmember Baldwin.
I would move to amend us to ten interviews.
Is there a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I would second that.
Okay, is there any discussion on ten interviews? Deputy Mayor Rakes.
The only discussion that I wanna have on that is that's what this meeting was for, to narrow it down to ten to fifteen. And so, that-
No, you had fifteen that you were-
Yeah, fifteen, yeah, to narrow it down. Fourteen. So, I think that ten is gonna be a lot to interview in one night, when you give them, because we gave them extra time this time for the interviews. So, that's my discussion.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilmember Amer.
I know I wish to interview everybody, but I think we get to ten will be longer. If you count, each one will ask a question with time, so I think we need to get halfway, like, either seven or eight. I'm sorry, ten, it's a lot. And it will be ending unfair for the candidate, because we will get exhausted and our decision may not be clear. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I, I'm really sorry to have to disagree with. This is a serious appointment, and as I said earlier, we had some great applicants, and I really feel that we should take that time to interview the amount that- I also have to say, I agree that I understood that we could get ten to fifteen applicants to be able to bring back, but we had fifteen to review.
There were fifteen to review with the understanding that council would come back out on council floor and reduce the number to the number that you wanted to interview.
Right, and I still feel that the number ten would allow us to be able to get some of those individuals, because they were all great, and it's really hard to pick. But I do feel very strongly that ten would be the number that I feel we should really interview.
All right. Councilmember Baldwin?
Thank you, Mayor. I think recognizing that this process is onerous, perhaps for all involved, if, if not most difficult for the candidates themselves. We've had forty-five people put their hat in the ring, because they feel that they have something to give back to Auburn. And in going through the applicants and narrowing it down to those that we have just reviewed, there's a lot of, of energy, there's a lot of ideas, there's a lot of talent, and I think from my standpoint, while ten may be a high number and would be a lot to organize for next week, I think it would be important to give those who've made it to this final round an opportunity to present themselves in person, because I tend to think that in person is where you get the best sense of an individual, more so than what we read, even within the application. So, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Clanton Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that we had an op, we had an opportunity to have some pretty good discussion about it in the chambers. I like the fact that we keep the number, I know there's been another motion to go to ten, but I thought six, seven was, 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 was a good number. I think when we get into these higher numbers, and then you have, you know, each council member can ask one to two questions, and I think we, I feel like I got a pretty good sense back there of, of who we narrowed the list, or at least the people that, we didn't narrow it down, let me say it, the folks that we were reviewing the applications, I felt like we had a pretty good sense of, you know, what they were, what they were bringing to the table. I thought we had some pretty good discussion about that back there, so I wouldn't see a reason, just for the sake of being on the floor, to let them have their time out here to talk and say more. I think that that, for me, you know, we have fourteen people on the list, and we're gonna interview ten, I just think that's a high number.
Okay. All right, so here's how this is going to work. If everyone has finished speaking, if there are, you will vote on the number ten. If that passes, we will go to determining how long those interviews will be, because if you have ten, the way the council rules of procedure are stated right now, I believe it's thirty-minute interviews, up to. If they have more than six, they can change the number, they can change the amount of time? Okay. The council may reduce the thirty-minute interview time if the number of applicants exceeds six candidates. Each interview shall follow the following format. One, the applicant shall present their credentials to the city council up to ten minutes. Two, the city council shall ask the predetermined set of questions, one question per council member, which must be responded to by each applicant. Each applicant will be asked and will answer the same set of questions, and will have two minutes to answer each question, up to fourteen minutes. Three, an informal question-and-answer period during which council members may ask and receive answers to miscellaneous or follow-up questions for the remainder of time. Okay? So, if you go with more than six, per the rules, if they, if you choose more than six, then they can reduce the amount of time. So, I will leave it at that. I have my own thoughts on that, but I will leave it at that. Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Mayor, if we were to reduce the time, are we, or, and maybe this is more directed towards our city clerk, Sean, if we were to reduce the time, are we reducing it by five minutes, ten minutes? What are we looking at?
That is council's choice.
Up to your choice. All right. All those in favor of selecting and interviewing ten applicants, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's two. All opposed, please raise your hand and say no.
No.
All right. It is two ayes and four noes. The amendment fails. We are now- We are now back at the First Amendment, which is seven candidates. Again, if, if this fails, we will go back to the original motion. All those in favor of identifying and interviewing seven candidates, please, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay, how many is that? Three? It's seven. All those in favor of selecting and interviewing seven candidates. Okay, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
That's four. All opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, that is four to two. That motion passes, the amendment passes. This is kind of silly, but I now have to vote on the original motion, which has been amended to seven. Alright. All those in favor of interview, of identifying and interviewing seven candidates, please say aye.
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 One, two, three, four. All opposed, please say no.
No.
The motion passes. There will be seven candidates that are selected and interviewed by this council. Uh, I am going to ask for, well, I don't have to ask, I can just do it. I am going to go into a five-minute recess so council can look at their notes to determine which seven they are going to select. When we come back from that recess, every council member will have seven votes. Okay? Alright, we are in recess until 8:04. Call the meeting back to order. And council, this is the time as well. So when I call the applicant number, before you vote, you can make comments on the floor about the application. Alright, the qualifications or the application? Sound fair? Alright, we will begin with applicant number one. Would anyone like to make comments about applicant number one? Councilmember Baldwin?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought applicant one had a deep work history and a broad range of experience. That could be beneficial to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on councilmember number one? Alright, so the way we're going to do this, if you want to vote for councilmember number one, or councilmember applicant number one, please raise your hand and keep it raised. So we have councilmember Clinton Taylor and councilmember Kate Baldwin selecting number one. Alright. Applicant number seven. Is there anyone that would like to speak to applicant number seven? Alright. Please, if you are voting for applicant number seven, please raise your hand and keep it raised. Alright, we have one with councilmember Trout Manuel. Okay? Counts, or applicant number 17. Would anyone like to talk to the attributes, qualifications of councilmember, or, do it again, app, applicant number 17. Councilmember Ammer.
Reading the qualification, I think the applicant has a lot. And even when the answer for the three priority, they highlighted in a positive way.
Alright, thank you. Alright, if there are no other comments, all of those who would like to vote for applicant number 17, please raise your hand and keep it raised. It's member Baldwin. Alright, thank you. Oh, councilmember Ammer, did you have your hand raised too? Okay, if we can make sure that hands are high, maybe not, it doesn't have to be that high, but not like this. We could just raise it up. That would be great. Alright, so.
Sorry, Mayor, for that one.
Councilmember Ammer and councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you.
Alright, applicant number 20. Would anyone like to make comments about applicant number 20? Deputy Mayor Rakes.
On this applicant, I was impressed with the government experience that this applicant has and with the state tourism and marketing association. I think that could be a good asset for us.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alright, all of those who would like to select applicant number 20, please raise your hand high enough for me to see and keep it raised. Okay, we have councilmember Clinton Taylor, deputy mayor Rakes. That's it. Okay. Applicant number 21. Would anyone like to comment on the attributes? Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the thoughtful answers provided by applicant number 21, their financial history and in the workforce, their highest priorities, and their deep-rooted commitment to the community really stood out for me. Uh, and that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to talk to applicant number 21? Councilmember Ammer.
And yes, being longer in the community and being with nonprofit organizations, support young lady, I thought, I was impressed too.
Alright, anyone else? Alright, all those who would like to interview applicant number 21, please raise your hand, keep it raised high. Councilmember Clinton Taylor, councilmember Tracy Taylor, councilmember Ammer, councilmember Baldwin, councilmember Trout Manuel. Okay, is that it? We have five. Alright. Onto applicant number 25. Is there anyone that would like to speak to applicant number 25? Alright, if you would like to interview applicant number 25, please raise your hand high and keep it raised. Alright. Moving on to applicant 29. Is there anyone that would like to speak to applicant number 29? Councilmember Trout Manuel. Your microphone, please.
As we reviewed the applicants, uh, they had a lot of, um, experience, very well-written, uh, comments on every one of their questions. I liked the, their three highs, economic growth and local business support. I felt that they had a lot of asset to bring to council. And, um, so yeah, I.
Alright, thank you. Alright, all of those who would like to interview candidate number 29, please raise your hands. Okay, we have Trout Manuel, Rakes, and Baldwin. Is that it? Okay. Applicant number 32. Would anyone like to speak to applicant 32? Councilmember Ammer, your hand is raised high. Thank you very much.
Again, business owner, managing commissioner, involved in the community. I think, and the answer on the question, answer the question, it's show the involvement in the community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Alright, all those who would like to interview applicant number 32, please raise your hand. Tracy Taylor, Trout Manuel, Rakes, Ammer, handheld high. Alright. Moving on to applicant number 35. Is there anyone that would like to speak to applicant 35? Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this candidate's qualifications were impressive. Government infrastructure experience, policy and development, government operations, regulatory compliance experience. They're bilingual, as well as they have experience with large budgets and capital management projects. So I thought that that would be someone worth interviewing and hearing from them. Could potentially, if they're selected, be someone that could be an easy plug and play for council.
Thank you. Councilmember Tracy Taylor, did you?
I second what councilmember Taylor said.
Okay, just, alright. Is there anyone else that, councilmember Trout Manuel?
Yes, I also liked on this applicant, the deep passion that he ha, they have for civil service and public infrastructure. And they would, they have a lot of experience on what is really needed here on the dais. And so, that's, that's it.
Okay. All of those who would like to interview applicant number 35, please raise your hand. Councilmember Clinton Taylor, councilmember Tracy Taylor, councilmember Trout Manuel, deputy mayor Rakes, councilmember Baldwin. Okay? Applicant number 36. Would anyone like to speak about applicant number 36? Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Uh, while their past work experience is impressive, this applicant really, uh, really kind of solidified what our council stands for by, uh, representing himself by saying that their accomplishments, they can't recognize their own accomplishments because they worked with a team to get it done. Uh, I feel that this is very much in line with the council priorities. Uh, and it's not a solo project, it is a team project. And that's what stood out to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. All those that would like to interview applicant 36, please raise your hand. Councilmember Tracy Taylor. Okay? Applicant number 38. Councilmember Baldwin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this applicant has, uh, self-ident, pardon me, they self-identify as being data-driven and data-oriented, which if anyone has watched me serve on council, you know that, you know, looking at the numbers is tremendously important. Uh, this individual also has a background working with organized labor, which is something that I think our former councilmember Larry Brown would be deeply moved by. And, uh, this individual's also been a part of our human services committee, which requires a lot of time and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ammer, did you wish to speak as well?
No, she's camaraderie.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on applicant number 38? Alright, all those that would like to interview applicant number 38, please raise your hand. Councilmember Clinton Taylor, Tracy Taylor, Trout Manuel, Rakes, Ammer, and Baldwin. Alright, um, just so everyone knows where they are at this point. Councilmember Clinton Taylor, you have two votes left. Councilmember Tracy Taylor, you have two votes left. Councilmember Trout Manuel, you have one vote left. Deputy Mayor Rakes. Deputy Mayor Rakes, you have two votes left. Councilmember Amer, you have three votes left. And councilmember Baldwin, you have one. Okay, just so we don't go over. All right, next is applicant number forty. Is there anyone that would like to speak to applicant forty? Councilmember Amer?
Has been longer live in the city, been a former council member. He will come ready to serve and just reading-
We're on, we're on number forty.
Oh, sorry. I'm wrong. No, I'm wrong.
Okay.
I'm a wrong spot.
All right. All right. All those who would like to interview applicant number forty, please raise your hand. Well, so you have to vote for somebody because you have three votes and we have two left.
Oh, sorry. Do I need to vote to somebody or can I go back to vote or no?
So you have three votes left. You have-
Two applicants remaining.
We only have two applicants remaining. Each councilmember needed to have voted for seven applicants.
So I'll tell you what, if, once we finish with forty-one and forty-five, councilmember Amer, you can let us know which additional applicant you would like to add your final vote to, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Next is applicant number forty-one. Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. This applicant's past work experience is impressive with leadership roles in public safety. Also, at one point, an Auburn City Council member. What I appreciate about this applicant is the fact that they just want to be a placeholder for Larry Brown's remaining term and give everybody an opportunity to run when filing comes in May and for the election. I respect that. I think that, you know, with the experience as a former city council member, that is impressive and that that can bring some sort of synergy. It's kind of a plug-and-play kind of a situation where, you know, somebody that has that experience can also educate the four of us that are still relatively new, but not really, but still being able to bring together this council. So I respect that and, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Councilmember Clinton Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I echo that. I think that there is some benefits to having previous experience and then it also, at times, can work the opposite direction. I think that for the qualification that they have, this individual is obviously way more, well-qualified for this position. I did like the fact that, as one of the previous candidates had mentioned, about doing things collectively as a group and that it's a process and that, you know, we should be concerned as a collective group about how we are portrayed in the public eye and that they are more than open to being a part of the process and the solution. So I thought it was a great application.
Thank you. All right, all those that would like to interview applicant number forty-one, please raise your hand. Councilmember Clinton Taylor, councilmember Tracy Taylor, councilman, or deputy mayor Rakes, councilmember Amer. And finally, applicant number forty-five. Who would, is there anyone that would like to speak to forty-five? Councilmember Tracy Taylor, then councilmember Clinton Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. The impressive work, past work experience on applicant forty-five in the financial space is one that honestly could help a lot in the, in this, on our council. I also like they're so deep-rooted in this community and they really care for the place that they live. If anything, they bring personality, humor, and get-the-job-done attitude. And I really appreciate that about this applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clinton Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought this particular candidate applicant did a good job of expressing why they wanted to be on counsel. I also think that the leadership experience could be valuable to the counsel. And I thought that they clearly articulated when we asked what their three highest priorities were. I think they were in line with a lot of what those of us on council have already mentioned as some of our own key priorities. And I also, yeah, I think that's it.
Okay, all right. All right, all those who would like to interview applicant number forty-five, please raise your hand. Councilmember Clinton Taylor, councilmember Tracy Taylor, councilmember Trout Manuel, deputy mayor Rakes, councilmember Amer, and councilmember Baldwin. All right. Councilmember Amer, you have one more vote to make. Would you like applicant number one? Seven, seventeen, twenty. You've already voted for twenty-one. You already voted for seventeen as well, my mistake. Number twenty-five? Number twenty-nine? You've already voted for thirty-two. Number thirty-five?
I'm voting for number thirty-five.
All right, so I will call off those numbers, make sure that we agree. Candidate number twenty-one with five votes. Candidate number twenty-nine with three votes. Candidate number thirty-two with four votes. Candidate thirty-five with six votes. Candidate thirty-eight with six votes. Candidate forty-one with four votes. And candidate forty-five with five votes. Okay. We have our seven applicants counsel for next Monday's interviews. Now, since you did select more than six, your council rules of procedure do state that you can determine, you may reduce the time if you would like, but you do not have to. Each candidate will get up to thirty minutes if you do not reduce that time. And with seven candidates, that is three and a half hours of interviews. We are beginning at 5:00 PM next Monday. Is there any discussion or is there a motion? Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
I would really encourage the counsel to be mindful of the staff work that goes behind this and the fact that they have a lot to compile to have these interviews done, not only reaching out to the candidates, but then also putting together our questions and everything else. It's a lot of staff time and it's a lot of time for us as well. So I, I'm just, I'm urging all of us to be mindful of what goes into something like this. Thank you.
Councilmember Amer?
I think twenty minutes will be enough. Each candidate will have three minutes to speak, present themselves, and they have two almost minutes for each one of us to answer. It's kind of fifteen minutes, so we can narrow it to twenty minutes. Is that okay?
So are you making a motion?
I make a motion to have it twenty minutes.
Three-minute introduction?
Yes.
Three-minute introduction? And so twelve minutes, two minutes each for questions?
So they get like two minutes to answer each question. We cannot shorten more than that.
So you made a motion, so is-
I made a motion to have a twenty minutes for each. I make a motion to have a twenty minutes. And if you multiply twenty minutes and seven.
Okay, is there a second to the motion to reduce interviews down to twenty minutes? Councilmember Clinton Taylor? Okay. Is there any discussion on reducing the applicant? Councilmember Baldwin?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the twenty-minute window might be too tight to give a chance for the applicants to do their initial introduction, to go through the questions of counsel, and then to have a final statement at the end. I think giving each person the opportunity to go through that, we may find that some people move more quickly than others in their interviews. So I would think that, for me, I think twenty is too short.
Okay, I will just add that, remember, your own question has to be read within that twenty minutes as well. And any follow-up would be pretty null and void. But just reminding you of the process and some of you like to talk more than others. That was a diplomatic way to say it, I think. Some of you, your questions, I've read the questions. Some of you, your questions are longer than others. So, all right, we, councilmember Tracy Taylor?
I believe you were, oh, wait, I'll hold on, I'll hold on my comment. I'll hold on that.
Okay. Are there any other amendments to councilmember Tracy Taylor?
Okay, I wasn't sure if we were doing amendments or not. I'd like to see twenty-five minutes. I think that's, I think that's enough window. Thirty minutes is a lot and that's three and a half hours. Twenty minutes is not enough time to introduce yourself. And again, like, like Mayor had mentioned, we do have some pretty robust questions for the candidates. I believe we're all smart people here and we'd like to see a follow-up too. So I, I think twenty-five minutes is reasonable. I hate doing that to staff because I know the workload that comes behind that. But I think, in all fairness and for the candidates, making it not only worth our time, but their time too.
Thank you. There's a motion, or there's a motion to amend the motion to twenty-five minutes. Is there a second? Councilmember Baldwin?
I would second that as stated. I believe we'll need more than the twenty minutes. Thank you.
All right. Is there any discussion on the twenty-five-minute interviews? All right, all those in favor of amending to twenty-five minutes, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. All right, and as awkward as it is with, with the number changing, now the original motion is to have interviews for each applicant be twenty-five minutes. Is there any more discussion on that? All those in favor of interviews being twenty-five minutes for each of the seven candidates next Monday, twenty-five minutes, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Each interview next Monday night will be twenty-five minutes in length. And even with that, it will probably take five minutes to have one candidate leave the room and another candidate come in and be ready. So you really do have about a thirty-minute window between each candidate. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
So per the council rules, the, each candidate has ten minutes to introduce themselves and speak of their credentials. Is that the portion, are we going to shorten? Or is it the portion at the end when there's a follow-up? Because you can't shorten the question, two minutes is not, you can't shorten that.
Right. Councilmember Baldwin?
I would move that the reduction takes place in the introduction of the candidate.
Is there a second? Councilmember Amer?
I second.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, so that would give them a five-minute opening remarks. All right, all those in favor of reducing the introduction time from ten minutes to five minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes. It will be a twenty-five-minute interview with a five-minute opening or introductory remarks. Counsel, I know it says, "Mayor and counsel reports on the agenda this evening." But I can tell you, I am going to pass on giving my remarks. I will go by and ask everyone. I may give you a dirty look if you don't do the same. But deputy mayor Rakes?
I pass.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor? You can do it if you want.
No, ma'am, I pass.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
No, ma'am, I pass.
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
No.
Councilmember Amer?
Oh, I'm the troublemaker. I want to read it, but I will pass.
You don't, I can't force you to pass. Councilmember Baldwin?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. And I have no report either. Yes, counsel, any of the notes that you had in executive session must be given to the clerk. With that, thank you all, thank you all in the audience for your patience. Thank you, counsel, for your thoughtful deliberations. We are adjourned.